Before we start, Gordon's here. Did you have a question that you wanted to ask us today?
Yeah. I was going to ask someone, it's possible to move liquids from the council. What's your remedy to answer all of those? About half a thousand per cent of that money cost, or if we can add any extra bins like, you know. Residents are saying about liquids, I know we had, I think Chris should organize a liquid, but yeah. Yeah, I encourage residents to use liquids rather than throwing cans on the brass.
Chris, did you want to come in?
Do you have any idea where you want to put them? So you can send a site through to.
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
Don't tell me, just send it through to Nick.
Yeah, I'll send it through.
Okay, it depends on who owns the land.
It certainly will, yeah. So what I'd say is we can try and assist you as much as we can. We are responsible for installing liquids. However, a lot of the land around the estates is owned either by flagship or Breckland. So we have to go through them as permissions to be granted for us to install onto their land. But certainly feel free to put a request through, put some locations away you'd like to see some. I can then go to Breckland and see if they will approve of those. And then I can come back to committee and just make sure they're happy for where we're going to put them. Yeah?
All right.
Thank you. It's a long time. Yeah, it's not a quick, yeah, not a quick process, but we'll certainly try best. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so have we started recording? Great, right. Thank you very much for coming, everyone. Welcome to the Community and Environmental Services Committee of Tuesday the 7th of January at six o'clock. So let's get started. First of all, Karen, do we have any apologies for absence?
Apologies have been received from Councillors Brindall, Jeremy and Mike.
Thank you. Next, we have four five one twenty-four minutes of Community and Environmental Services Committee, and that was for the 5th of November meeting. Do we have any comments on those minutes? No, and if not, will you approve those minutes? Show of hands for approval of the minutes. Okay, four five two twenty-four declarations of any discloseable pecuniary interests. Okay, so we'll move on to four five three twenty-four, the town team managers' report. So hopefully everyone has had a chance to look at the report. So we just wanted to take any comments or questions from this month's report, please. Okay, one from me. Oh, that's Terry. Sorry, you did that.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it now.
That's okay.
Bench your strategy, what are those?
Yes.
Can we, as well as benches, and benches are great, and I'm all in favour of them, could we have associated liquids, please?
Similar question.
The issue with benches is always littering alongside them. I know it's a bit of a pain going across there, emptying them, but it's less of a pain than picking out off the front.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely agree with you. The benches themselves at the moment are sitting with the SMT, the Safe and Neighbouring Team. So basically, I've gone to Breckland Council to ask them for their permissions, because obviously they own the land for the installation side. And they've now come back and obviously passed us on to the Norfolk Police and the Safe and Neighbouring Team to get their correspondence. They're just concerned with the antisocial behaviour aspect, but as soon as we get the approvals, that's something we can look at, the bins. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so yeah, great, fantastic work as always. And it's always a bulky one when it's been. Brilliant to see all the work that's been going on.
Thank you.
And the only thing that I wanted to ask is if there are plans in place for the spring clean.
There is, yeah. So we were talking about that today as often. So we are looking at the, the date has been released now for the spring clean and keep Britain tidy. So that's something that will be coming up, and it starts around about March. So that'll be something that we'll be releasing shortly, once we've put plans together to hold community litrations and some town events for that, yeah.
Great, great, Terry.
Yeah, on that, would it be possible, I mean, we had a good one in autumn, but the volunteers were a bit sparse. Would it be possible to enter into any negotiation with any sort of companies around the town to provide?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a good point, Terry. So one of the things we're doing at the moment is with the team and the conservation volunteers. We're using a lot of team building days. They're doing a lot of work at the moment on our open spaces, including Barnham Common. So that's something we can go out to and obviously get their support with with the litrification side. Absolutely.
I think it's very much a case of foreign areas, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I don't know if this is the right for me to ask. Allotments, all right, but it's, Eddie? Okay, we seem to have lost track of our allotment holders. We've not had a meeting before the meeting for ages. I would like to suggest that we bring the informal meetings back ASAP. Because we had two allotment holders voted on to the allotment committee. So we had input from the allotments. Of course, they don't come in the evenings for various reasons. So we've lost this touch we had with them. I'd like to bring the informal meetings back ASAP, please.
Can you explain that, Nick? What did we previously do?
So previously, they had informal meetings held during the day with allotment holders. So allotment holders were able to come along and participate and have some input into the allotment sites. They could come along with any recommendations, any sort of points that were sort of failing within the rules and regulations could be brought up with the allotment holders in person. So it was a way of, yeah, sort of communicating quite clearly with allotment holders, and it was well attended. So that's something, again, that we can possibly potentially look at, Chris.
Yeah, if you would.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
If, like I said, I think one of the challenges we've had in the last few months is our lot of opposite people. So, so we've actually lost that a lot of those kind of inputs. And we're not getting any feedback from what's happening there. We're not obviously giving feedback.
Yeah, I was under the impression they were to be regularly scheduled.
Yeah, like Anna said, we have unfortunately been down with some stark illness and unfortunately we need to get back into the routine. So that is something that we can look at going forward, yeah.
Stuart, did you want to come in on that?
Yes, unless on your report, Nick.
Yeah.
I don't think he's belonged to the pet, but anyway. The overhanging bushes on the Monkford Road as you turn out Churchill Way on the right hand side. It's been reported to Norfolk three or four times now. Myself and Mac looked at it, it was October, yeah. Again, we put in a report, the actual county council, I think it's Jane, Jane James has been notified, and yet it's still the same. Visibility is poor coming out there for car and for disabled people and people with push chairs.
It's the right hand side as you're coming out onto Monkford Road.
Yep. There's about half to nearly a metre lost of the path.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, two questions. The first on provision for our young people and second on something else which I'll remember in a minute. So the first one was, there's a helpful update on multi-agency meetings.
Yes.
About provision of sports facilities and youth venues. Is there a kind of outcome on that or an action plan or something?
It's very early stages at the moment. The first meet was held back in December. And we managed to get all agencies and partners around the table, which was an absolute mission to get in reverse. But we managed to get there, which was great. So we had Norfolk Police, we had Breckland, we had Norfolk County Council. We had some of the youth team that work alongside the youth within the area from Norfolk County Council. So one of the things that we've potentially looked at is trying to see how we can tackle antisocial behaviour that's happening within the town centre. And a lot of the feedback we're getting at the moment is that there's not enough facilities for our young people within the town. So it was a multi-agency approach to talk about ways of how we move forward, how we can collaborate together and pushing something forward to bring something for the younger people in the town. And some more updates will definitely follow. We're due to have another meeting later this month. It'll be on a monthly basis that we'll meet, and then hopefully over the next sort of three months, hopefully we should have some ideas of where we're going. But there was certainly a good full support there for that.
Have you invited any of your advisors?
I have, yes, yes. I've sent emails out. I'm just waiting for an update, yeah.
We did invite them originally, but they won't attend the first meeting, but we are hoping that.
We're hoping the second one.
Attend the second.
Yeah, thank you.
Sounds really positive.
Oh, it's definitely, yeah, something that's moving forward.
It was very well attended. This room was full, so we were really pleased.
It was really good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The second one was, I think probably just a reminder for me more than anything, on Barnham Cross Common.
Yes.
Talked in a couple of places on the challenge of getting it back under control or reverting it to what it should be. And some of the cost challenges on that. What is the, what's the kind of standard that we're trying to achieve? How is that set? And what is the consequence of us not?
We had management plans drawn up for the site, and the recommendation is that you open the main open space areas of the common up to allow the wild flora and fauna to roam over. Unfortunately, through the lack of grazing and difficulties with grazing over the last few years, the gorse has come back in a lot of the open space areas. So at the moment, we're trying to return all the open space areas back to originally open space ground, grassland, heathland. And they will be remaining, so we won't clear all the gorse. There'll be gorse and trees obviously around the outer perimeter. But the main focus is the inner park, where there's a rich history of like the flora and fauna are, with a lot of the rare species. So hopefully in time, we've just had a really positive go with our community payback. And they've been on the common for the last two weeks, removing a lot of the gorse within the open spaces. So that's helped them keep costs down tremendously, and they'll be working alongside the town team in disposing that as well.
Okay, and is some of the work kind of tied in with any of the rural payments or anything like that? Is there, you know, is there a financial penalty to us not achieving any of that? If I could.
There actually is a potential list of financial penalties.
Yeah.
The one thing I had emailed today from our agent to vouch around rural payments. And we are, they are very far behind because we are in the old scheme and we are fighting for the new scheme. The old scheme doesn't pay significantly that much, new scheme does. And there's a delay on that. So we've actually just agreed to extend, to stay on the old scheme, which I think is not as obvious. But it's obviously there's, there's money for us, but it's better than just saying, oh, we're waiting for the new scheme, and that might only happen in a few years. But there is a financial penalty. We have been audited by Rural Payments Authority in 2003. And we actually got fined £8,000 for not doing some of the project work. We had to refund for not complying with the requirement. So there is a continued liability that actually does sit there, so.
So kind of said after 2003, we reviewed the process of the commons, and there was a change of offices, and we kind of looked at the process again. The management plans drawn up and how we go forward in maintaining the sites and kind of keeping them for their purpose of the triple SI rating. So it's been quite a complex measure.
Obviously, there are other reasons for doing it, not just the financial.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
That's Terry.
Yes, regarding the market, two things. One is I'm really pleased to see the initiatives go forward in the prospect of more and a better offer. So that's great. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
The other thing is I'd like to pay tribute to the coordinator. She's really, really good. She's liked and respected by all the traders. We had an incident, which I'm not very aware of, a few weeks back. It could have been potentially very, very dangerous, and she dealt with very calmly and professionally and got sorted. So just be glad to hear.
Yeah, absolutely. You're doing a fantastic job, Terry, with promoting the market, you know. We're hopefully getting some more schools coming on in the coming months, which will see our market thrive further. Thank you.
Yeah, just coming back just to clarify, maybe others could, I wonder if it's possible whilst we're looking at that complex, you know, part on, 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 to do with the commons and the purposes and the processes that need to be applied there. There's always, there's always been over time, big questions about the specifics for which the commons are restricted. Well, what can a company do? And what can, cannot be licensed and what, you know, what users can really be.
Yes.
Applied to the commons. And it seems to be a bit of confusion over time with people wanting to use it for certain things. And not as a council, I'll speak for myself, all the time, it's never clear the definition and like the frame for which each space can be used for. There's got to be trust, and there's got to be, you know, the original paperwork or, I would imagine, very old, you know, ancient paperwork. But if you aren't digging up all of that, if that's going through the process, have you an opportunity there to, you know, kind of see that information, to collate into a little site note, to make it clearer, even to serve as a guideline for us to use when there's any.
Yeah, if that's something we can push out to social media or.
It streamlines the services. I think it makes it clearer for us as well, so we can recycle other frameworks for Terry.
Yeah, thank you, Carla.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Great, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it's always, I mean, the winter planting just looks lovely.
They've certainly tried, they've battled a little bit, you know, against such behaviour. But we certainly do have to battle along and keep it looking nice as much as we can, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to four five four twenty-four financial reports. So for this one, it's to receive and consider the financial reports for the eight months ended 30th of November 2024. Do we have any comments on this or questions or need for clarity on this item? And there was one, I don't know, we've got a few budget things, so I wasn't quite sure when to bring out. But I have had one thought about the car issue, sort of being expensive. Are there many instances where staff are using a car, actually they could do a journey on an e-bike, a kind of electric bike, where they're not needing lots of equipment and they can get around town?
A lot of the jobs do require equipment, yeah. It becomes difficult when we're sort of carrying tools and stuff. They can be very limited in the sense of not having a vehicle. But there's something, there's certainly options there that we can look at potentially. I mean, within the town centre, we're looking at getting some street barrows and stuff to use. So guys can also use those and put the tools on and stuff when they're working within the town centre. But it does, yeah, complicate things if, yeah, we haven't got the vehicles to transport tools, equipment, materials, that kind of side of things with some of the jobs that the team do.
Yeah, so if there was like one or two bikes that were available for any journeys that didn't need.
Mostly the guys go out in twos or threes.
Yeah.
I don't know, we've been about taking the equipment anyways, so then you just put that person on an e-bike just to get them there. Then my son just jumped in the van.
Yeah, 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 it's just a thought if there are any journeys, any little deliveries or any journey, I don't know.
It's not, I can't think of anything where they're not carrying any equipment.
Very, very limited.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, we're certainly, yeah.
Yeah, we'll definitely think about it.
Yeah, can I ask where we are with the vehicles, please? In sorts in.
Yeah, that's coming on, it's coming to a future agenda.
Right, I'll be on corporate services.
That'll be on corporate services in two weeks' time. I've written the report, it's ready to go out. It's just, we're basically got to be purchasing vehicles, but obviously it's a cost implication. So it's got to go to corporate services, and then that'll be for corporate services to put up full council because they won't be able to allocate that amount of expenditure from that committee.
Okay.
Yeah, so I wanted firstly to say, sorry, I missed it in the last item, but just to say well done on the partnership work also, which is obviously a financial benefit and also a social benefit to the, to the community, I think. So that is really great to see, and like the offenders, the offenders work. And in the fundraising that's happened around the donations, I guess that's mainly to the flower planting itself.
Yes, we've got a lot of support from our local businesses with the floral displays and the effect that in bloom. So that's something that we're looking to work forward with this year, again with our local businesses and. So it's something that we've brought back again. Yeah, we used to do a lot of it, and unfortunately during COVID and things, you know, times become tough a little bit with businesses, but businesses have come on really, you know, supportive now going forward. And they really want to see a change within our town, you know, and that's great, you know, to be able to work with our local community and our businesses to push the town forward.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Thank you.
And it's a relief to see the play park repairs down again. Can we point that anything that we've done that has helped with that?
One of the things that was invested in our team, so our town team are now trained to carry out repairs in-house. So that's taken a lot of the pressure off using external contractors. We still have to use external contractors in some circumstances with like wet core surfacing and certain equipment, you know, installations. But the main job, the bulk of, you know, repairs is now carried out in-house by the team. So it's just the cost of the actual parts and the labour then is covered by the team.
But there hasn't been a reduction in vandalism?
There has, yeah, that's also added to it. So that's a good point, Yane, yeah, it certainly is. You know, we've, we've noticed over the last year that, you know, the antisocial behaviour has reduced. And again, that's that partnership working with Norfolk Police. They've been helping assist us a lot with our sort of, you know, antisocial behaviour issues. So again, it's a partnership working that's kind of reduced that down, thankfully.
Anything else on that gender item? Okay, great. Now on to the chunky one, four five five twenty-four, budget for the year ending 31st of March 2026. Do you have any questions, comments or remarks, suggestions?
More than anything.
Oh, Terry, sorry.
Yeah, there was just, having spoken so well of the my coordinator, there was a suggestion from her that several of the gazebos are now nearing the end of their useful life. Have we got anything on that? Because I suppose they're particularly far.
No, so that's something we've been looking at with the previous company that supplied them, to see if we can get some new covers. Some of the frames are, it's just the covers, isn't it? So that's something that we're working with at the moment with the company to get some prices and quotes, to see how much we can sort of, you know, get. For the replacements.
Thanks, that's not really.
No, absolutely.
Costs money.
With a big X, comes in.
Yeah.
There was just a couple of question, or one question really. So on street furniture and play parks, maybe you've already answered that really, but it felt like there was quite a big reduction. I think we're looking, and I just wanted to make sure we felt that that was, I know you wrote in the report that.
I think if I can, if you're just speaking, in over the number of years, if I go back to about 2022, we spent significantly of the amount in 2023, and so we, our street furniture is actually in really good shape. So we actually don't need to replace it. So over time, that expenditure has reduced. We've also changed our accounting system. So when you, I see you looking back at previous years, we used to expense it on purchase, now we expense it on when it's actually used. So we have, we have a stock of. But my understanding and, you know, certainly we're not coming across issues where we have to replace benches because they're actually unusable or, and bins, we've put in all, all the old bins have gone, they've been replaced and they're upgraded. So we've just been hoping that it's actually quite conservative. And the second part of the play parks is that we have invested, you know, in terms of the, if I take the last three financial years, we have invested in excess of £100,000 in terms of that. So we're hoping that that payback comes in. We are building up the reserve, so as much as we, we're not reducing total expenditure on play parks because then we're making a contribution to the reserve, and that will actually hopefully build it up. Because in doing all the repairs that we've done in the last two years, we've actually depleted some of the kind of earmarked reserves for play parks. And we need to start building better.
Also, with next team being more qualified, things like fixing up the play parks and refurbishing the benches, we can do in-house, which has brought the cost down as well. So the more we do in-house, utilize next team, the more we can bring these costs down for you guys.
Just one little quick, we had our roster inspection done quite recently, and there is nothing that is very high light from that. So I'll start doing an inspection. If they've got red items, we have to deal with it immediately. There's not very many amber, and there's a fair amount of green. So that also gives us an indication that we don't, we shouldn't have breakdowns and an immediate need to spend in the short term.
It was one of the things that the roster inspector picked up on when he visited each site. He came and met with me afterwards to give me an update of, you know, what he'd sort of found on the sites from his professional opinion. And he was very, very, spoke highly of Fekford's play parks and the condition of them. So he said it was an absolute pleasure to come to a town where he see that the play parks were cared for, they were maintained and looked after. So it's a real credit to the town council. So that's just something to pass on to yourselves as well. And the team are doing a, you know, cracking job in preventive maintenance. So one of the things that we do as a team now is we look at all our assets and we're doing preventive maintenance plans. So moving forward, that will keep costs down, and it will just mean that we have to put money aside for the actual maintenance rather than replacing. So again, going forward, that will just help the budgets.
Okay, so that's good. I mean, the thought about play parks was kind of, we've already saving money, so can we really cut that in half? Carla?
I was just gonna say, we've been going around, play parks being one of the biggest and best of this council to maintain, and especially when there's unsavable and all sorts of things. So to know that we're now on right track and you can find the strategies to implement systems that actually keeps things thriving, you know. We have to divest and invest, and it was hard when the previous couple, couple three, two, three years on investment was heavy on the budget. So everybody was looking, you know, very closely at it. But to know that we reached a point now where things are in place, so we just have to set the cash flow to maintain them and get feedback, which is really good, get feedback to see, you know, that we're doing something right and certainly for others. It's nothing but a credit to, you know, to the team and to the rest of the council, obviously. I think that's very good.
Yeah, I'm wondering what the main driver of the variance in open space maintenance is? Is it things like gorse clearance and machinery hire, basically?
A lot of it is the mechanical, yeah, side of maintaining the sites, yeah. So it's vastly important that we keep our graziers, that we've managed to secure again, and to help keep reducing those costs as much as possible. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. And then property maintenance has got a few new lines in it. Is that because of the change in how budgets are constructed?
It is. What we're trying to do is, one of the things that we found, and I've been reporting this in corporate service and in the other committee, is we have significant open and under spends, if you go from here to here. The reason is that we budgeted. We have one line out of property maintenance, and no one really understands what's in it. So what we've done now, we're working quite hard behind the scenes to break it all down so that, you know, it's pat testing, doesn't happen every year. It happens every two years, but we're not sure when it does happen. The legendary stuff is there. So all we do is just breaking it down so that we can actually budget it more easier and understand what, what those cost drivers are. Because you can have something, what happened at the bus station this year, you know, the ventilation system collapsed. That's two and a half thousand pounds of expenditure gone. Hopefully it never doesn't recur for many years to come. But that's, we never understood that. By breaking it down the way that we have in the budget, we can actually monitor it and report back on it.
I think the important thing as well, Alan, from the budget and purposes, is to have that contingency plan in place, isn't it? To have that reserve, you know, aside just in case something does break down, because a lot of the time, you know, it does come to shock us, doesn't it? Yeah.
Have we put money into the EMR for property maintenance?
We have. There's a budget in the, there's a budget, there's amount of share, there's a budget in that to go into our property maintenance.
Thank you.
These property maintenance, this breakdown here, obviously this is the first year, so is that, and what's the estimate based on? Have we collected information on what's spent in the previous year?
Yes, I have. I put, so in order to do this budget, I've actually done a detailed review of the existing budget, created all the new codes, and then I've used that to see where we are on that. Because you can't, without understanding what, what, all the components of our property maintenance is, you can't, you can't go forward. So I've done, it's a dual exercise, every time I'm looking at this year, breaking down this year, and then revising the budget going forward.
It's, it's a bit of a guess because obviously we're working six months in advance of when we're actually needing the money. So it's a case of taking six months of the current year, what we're in, and six months of the previous year before, and knocking them together. And then Alan doing a big analysis of how much that comes to and how much he thinks it will be in future. And putting a cost analysis on top of that. It's a bit of a guess.
I just wanted to mention the cemetery. I read on the budgeted income, you know, it's gone down significantly in the last few years. And other prices such as grass cutting has gone up also significantly, which I've specified that considering how much of the new extension we put over to wildflowers now. So there should in theory be a lot less cutting in that area. I know prices go up. And I also know in there that you suggested that we we look at reviewing the the fees and charges so that in March, we agree that they're incrementally done. I think that, you know, should be done without a second thought, really. Something we talked about before was more memorials because we've run out of them. And I think I'll put a proposal forward at the March meeting for the memorial trees. I'll socialize that with everybody beforehand, but at least if we can get that started, it's our first step into doing more memorial stuff, because we're really losing money on determines.
Yeah, I think I've had a conversation with Nick and Alan regarding the cemetery. And I've looked at other proposals, I think that some of them came from yourself. And we are going to look at them, we're just waiting to get this month out of the way with the budgets, everything else. And then we've got to go forward with the pricing with the cemetery and everything else we were talking about it just the other day.
Okay, I just want to associate the point, we've done a lot of work, rules and all that, everything that we've been talking about for years and years, which we've done, but we're not doing it. But we've actually virtually taped at the March meeting, so we'll have a quite a bit of symmetry, symmetry agenda involved.
The one other thing I was going to mention that's not in there is mapping, right? It's not mentioned.
Yeah, that's something that I was at my previous council, I'd then introduced that and we paid for it and it's part of the system that you currently use. There is a cost to it, but it's absolutely amazing. You can, I don't know if you know it, but you can see every single interment online. And also it has a photo attached with everyone who's looking for whatever you're looking for, you can find it online and that would be on our website. So it's something that we can get Kerry to look into as an extra and maybe bring it to the March meeting.
Brilliant, yeah.
Well, it does two things as well. Not only does it inform us what we've got, it also informs us what space we're not using. So particularly on the old part of the cemetery where we can reuse, we could probably increase our, you know, income.
And just on a note, I do have a meeting with the Sue and Breckland regarding the new cemetery at the Sue this month, latest month.
Okay. Right, well, I think it was very helpful. This was all laid out with the explanations and everything, which has helped us to understand and not have too many questions or concerns. So looking at the recommendations, we've discussed or reviewed, to make recommendations to Corporate Services Committee on the various draft budgets presented. Are we happy to recommend that we put it forward as is laid out?
Is it possible to have a breakdown of what vehicle costs we pay out?
Again, it's mostly, it's mostly leasing fees. Sorry, it's mostly vehicle leasing fees. So because we lease them, we don't pay N O Ts and that, it's fuel. Our spark haven't been the best drivers, so we have had a little bit of damage, damage to the speed of our bikes. But generally, it's about four thousand, five thousand, four thousand pounds. And that's the later costs.
So what, obviously, if you're getting new vehicles or replacement vehicles, because well, I've been in district of logistics for most of my life. And I think Gordon will stand up for this one. If you've got a particular driver that constantly has accidents, then not stay disciplined, but it's set on a course to drive more defensively, just do the breaks and make Gordon get out. Defensive driving, the brakes, if you have too many accidents. And it just, you know, obviously, because the vehicles are the lifeblood of what you're doing.
It's something, it's something that we will bring in. Obviously, to do that, you have to have a policy, you can't just bring it in. And once we get the vehicles, then we will bring in the right procedures with them to make sure that they're driven appropriately. But until council decide that they're even going to buy them, it's an if and situation.
Nothing worse than seeing them in vehicles.
Oh, I agree.
Absolutely. One of my complaints.
Terry?
Yeah, just to respond to that, as Chair of Corporate Services, it has been raised that, it has been talked about there. Issue is very definitely the lease fees, which could be mitigated by buying probably three-year-old vehicles instead and using them as a cost.
Yep.
Leasing is just a very expensive way of dealing with them. I agree with all you say about that driving, but that's not really the issue as we stand here.
Well, I thought it depends how many vehicles you have. I would have gone along the line, leasing would be more beneficial because, one, you get the service. It's not, so you're saying you're buying three-year-old vehicles, so as a business, you know, I've worked for many companies where vehicles are three, four years old, they don't then replace them with three, four-year-old vehicles. They replace them with new vehicles because these vehicles are past their shelf life. So if you're then going to buy three-year-old vehicles, how do you know that they've not been ragged by previous owners? Which the chances are, if they're up for sale after three years, then the chances are they've been well-used by a previous owner.
I think this is a discussion for the Corporate Services Meeting. Yeah, we can't, we don't have control on that here.
I'm sorry, sorry, just, yeah.
Okay, so we've got the two recommendations to discuss and review the draft budgets and to make recommendations to the Corporate Services Committee on the various draft budgets presented. Could we have a proposer and a seconder on these, please? Carla first, Terry Land second. And vote.
All losing favour.
Oh, now.
Is that everybody?
No.
Chris is not a member, he's
It's like not to listen. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to four, five, six, twenty four, small grants, we have just one small grant proposal or what's the word, application from that's where it actually says.
It's a British Student Association.
Okay, so hopefully everyone's had a Did anyone have any comments on Terry?
It's obvious it's not affect for the association. Is there a chance that the use of any monies given would be moved outside and upward? So I don't think there's any basis on which we approve this.
Carla, sorry. So in our policies, when we give money away to the those groups, it states that there's three weeks for ringfence for use and desperate the area, the town council that is sort of giving the money, provided that they can, you know, protect the money and so put it on restricted use. See how that's been a problem. There has been other groups that have multiple locations, but providing that they apply it for the reuse of the Breckland Leisure Centre to be used here, that's for them. Should be all right.
Rest of the
I have no problem with it. We've actually given money to do our own install, but that's not
Yeah, it's just it's not too far up there, it's not too far off, that's for, that's for off surrounding areas, if it's directly connected to Tesford, but, you know. This brings fans for the Tesford area, then it's not a issue.
I think they have specified that this is for events in Breckland Leisure Centre. It runs at least six events, Breckland Leisure Centre is a not finding group.
There's a benefit to it, I think.
That's the thing.
Yeah, but, but not exclusively, the point is, it's not exclusively in Breckland Leisure Centre, I think. I tend to take the, take the guard of what the officer said, Alan, as well as yours.
Okay. So the officer has said that they do, they suggest that it's it is recommended that this grant application not be supported. But it's up to you guys whether you agree with the officer or want to make a different recommendation.
And make a suggestion, we go back to the applicant and and ask them to add additional notes, additional information, how they're going to ringfence and put their concerns restricted for the Tesford users, participants or the Tesford location. Just bring it back to the table, let alone an idea.
I think it's a big issue that this is for a trophy rostrum, that's not going to be used exclusively in Thetford. Not really sure how it benefits Thetford.
I'm sorry, we had someone hands, Yain, we had your hand up.
I was going to say that we talked earlier about the lack of facilities for young people to engage in sports and other things in Thetford. And I cannot feel like, for this boys apparently through the amount of money, I wouldn't personally quibble with it. I would say if it's going to help and support the delivery of some healthy activities in Thetford, I'd be in favour of supporting it.
And Mac was next. Should you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was going to say pretty much the same thing. I do get your point, though. It doesn't say that it's specifically for people in Thetford. However, it's based in Thetford. I know it says Breckland Leisure Centre on the cover. But it's an asset that is used by people here. I would agree with what Carla says. On plenty of other cases, we've gone back to it and says, can you reword what you're doing there or make it much clearer? Because, and and make our concerns visible to them. Say, you know, we want this to be for the people of Thetford. Don't mind if other people use it, but it's got to be mainly for the people of Thetford. And I think that's fair, but as we, Yain says, you know, we need to support the youth sport. So I'd like to go back to them and say, you know, please redo your homework with some advice.
Stuart was
Yeah, it's really touching that judo isn't really a core sport. So obviously, there's going to be fewer places where judo is taught. And Breckland Leisure Centre is one of them that they use. And I know there's, I know half a dozen people that are members of the judo club, go to Breckland and it's you could, you could question what the grants would give. Is all that money for Thetford or do we know?
I sympathise with Terry's point. I think the management of Thetford should stay in Thetford as I mentioned before. However, I think maybe that's an issue with lack of definition in our, in our own policy, where the grants, what is considered the people Tesford. Is there seventy-five percent of the participants of the organisation are Tesford residents or Tesford based? Is it sixty percent, is it ninety percent? Perhaps this is a small little sub clause that we are going to put there to give some guidance when we vote on these other grants, when there's a grey area. On the other point, I completely agree with you. We're talking five hundred quid. I mean, there's been occasions where this council ever with grants of six thousand and four, which the rules were changed. This is small grassroots sports that if we don't support, we end up, you know, it's just some of them, we'll lose them over time.
I'm being on to the proposal.
Yeah, yeah. And Terry?
Having listened to all these arguments, I'd be a lot more inclined to be providing the money if it was something that was sort of really definably helpful to people playing the sport. A trophy rostrum doesn't make anyone better at sport, it doesn't make them enjoy it anymore. If it was for equipment, if it was for mats, if it was for gear, all the rest of it, I think I'd be a lot more minded to approve. Because then it would be golden, this will obviously be shipped around.
Okay, so what am I doing? Okay, okay, so we're going to vote on the recommendation to say that it's not supported and then we're going to go back with how we want to feed that back to them on what we've discussed. Yes.
I agree with that. I just wondered, thinking on what you've just said there, whether it'd be worth saying, if it was for a rostrum, if it had set for town council sponsored, you know, quite clearly, then that that would change it slightly. Because, you know, whenever they do have an event, it looks like we've supported it.
I just said that I disagree, Mac. I think when people ask for money, they're telling us what they want the money for. If we instead of approving the grounds and telling them, yes, we can give you some to help you out in whatever, whatever activity, event or crazy idea you have, we can tell them yes or no. It's not up to us to tell the groups what they should be doing the money, they have to govern themselves. If they ask for money for a purpose, then that's why they need money for, totally agree, I can see the sponsorship and branding, the Tesford Town Council is great. But I don't think five hundred quid go a long way for a small group to redo kids and to put the branding on top. By the time you do that, it costs a whole lot more than five hundred quid to a club. If they want money for trophies, yeah, competitively, giving awards is not what makes the sport. But maybe the kids coming together with the families wants to know how to celebrate, socialise and get together, maybe that's what social prescribed inside of things, are the trophies and make a celebration out of it for the participants and those that that support the sport and the group. You just have to look at it from many different angles. They could have one reason, their reasons. It's not up to us to tell them what to do with the money, it's up to us to clarify what they want to do and why, how does that benefit us as a test. I just go back to them and ask them, what do you want the money for? How is this going to benefit the people from Tesford? And then we can decide.
Had a really good discussion on this, actually.
It's because what is we're saying is we're going to come back to this in other grounds, there will always be groups applying for small pockets of money. And this is an issue that's going to be raised, like what's the residents, what's the percentage of participants, you know, that one that I raised. It's going to come back, keep coming back. Unless we make a frame and define exactly what it is, black and white, this grey area will always cause discussion. It's just going to be a repetitive argument.
Okay, great. So just to clarify, we'll do this in two stages. First, I'll take a vote that we're not, we're not supporting the grant application and then we'll vote on how we are going back, our response back to the
This not supporting the application.
Yes. But we're, we're going to go back to them and tell them how to resubmit their application based on our advice.
So what we need is an alternative resolution from yourself. So what we're suggesting is that the officer to go back to the applicant and clarify what the money is used for and what percentage will be used by Thetford residents. Or do you want to do a long term?
I would park the application until they gave us that information and then we make a definitive decision.
Sorry, I can't, I didn't.
I'd say we could just park the application until they give us that information, ask them for the information we want or for the clarification we need. And then come back to this application earlier, earlier.
We need to go back to them and we need a resolution. We can't put in the resolution, we're going to park the application.
And I, my preference would be to approve the grant.
Mine as well.
Because how are they going to say, I mean, yeah, my preference would be to prove it.
Okay. Why can't we park the application? We're running past without applications and I'm a bit confused about that part, so.
We can park it, but what I need from council is you to agree on what we're going to do with this. So I need you to come up with either we agree it, we don't agree it, or we put in some caveats and bring it back to council in March.
Okay, I see what you mean now, thanks for the clarification. In my, in that point, I would prefer something, we agree with the caveat that you choose to find a fancy payment, you choose to find how are we going to ringfence this money? And explain to us, you know, should have some other security.
I guess the issue is we want, we want them to come back because we're not just agreeing and then they can come back with
We won't get paid until they come back, wasn't the clarification?
If we approve it, it won't come back to committee. We need it to come back to committee.
Well, that's
We, instead of saying we, the application is not supported, can we say that we're not approving it, Max?
I think we're actually arguing about the same thing here. I think we're minded to support it, but we would like them with some advice from us to resubmit it.
Exactly.
So that it makes it much clearer how it's going to benefit Thetford. And that's all we're asking. We're just, we're just, because we, and the reason I say it's important we do it, is we've done it with other groups. We've declined them and asked them to redo their application. And then subsequently, we've approved it. So there's nothing wrong with that, it's just a bit of due diligence. I think, you know, the fact that we had so many questions on this one little tiny subject means it does need clarification.
It does need.
So I think, I think we're in mind to approve it and let them know that we want to, but they need to answer a few more questions for us. I think that's fair.
In terms of how we're actually do, how we're actually doing this, do we need to vote that we're not supporting it? And then vote that they're coming back or do we just
No, you can do, you can do an alternative. You don't have to go so, but what we do need to come up with is the But what we do need to come up with is the wording, because obviously that goes into the minutes and that has to be accurate, what you agree on. I'm happy you're just all talking and then we surmise what you're saying. And then you come back at the next meeting and go, we didn't, we didn't agree on that. So I need a direct wording so that we can come back with.
Can we say the application has not yet been supported, but when it's returned with these amendments, we'll review it again?
I think that's, I think that's a bit technical. If you, if you were to say, um, council has, has asked the officer to go back to the applicant to resubmit with further clarifications or something along them lines.
Okay, I think that's how we voted on it in the past when we've had these. Yeah.
Yeah, I wondered how, how they will receive it and that, like, what are you asking us to do here? We've already said this for events in Thetford. What else can we, you know, they can write it in a different way. It's not going to change what we think. So I wondered whether what we're really asking is what percentage of your club membership is, has a postcode in Thetford saying? So we can say, yes, that's a group that, you know, is Thetford based or not, but it just feels like more work than it's worth to be.
Totally. Obviously, to go back to them with the objections officers raised and said, we'd like to clarify this.
Yeah. Okay. It's just literally getting the wording so that we're getting this right. That's where we're, or I'm coming stuck. Okay. So what we're going to vote on is, I want to include both of these, hang on. Officer to ask the applicant to please clarify what the money is used for and what percentage of resident or what percentage of club members are based in Thetford.
So you can't use that as club members because the football club agreed to have a grant, the bowls had a grant. Now, 100% of their members are from Thetford. So you cannot use that.
Okay.
That's a very good point.
So they've already taken their money.
So this is why I said we should go back to the objections the officers made. They said there were objections, otherwise.
And I suggest that you then approve it because it seems to me that you're minded to approve it in the future.
They approve it on the proviso that the town council logo is on their roster. They're going to have paper.
You can say whatever you like.
You can put restrictions on the grant unless it's approved and they have to report that how and where the money has been used.
Yeah, I do.
So you can do that as part of the grant restrictions. It's not a big ask. It's such a part of the rules. We can implement any rules or any demands we want for that money within, if you want to be spending one event after the event. If it's a month, two, three, you have to report on this. How many people got awards? Where was the location? What the cost were used for? Simple.
Do we normally follow up on grants? Who, who, we should, oh, we should.
Not, not really.
But we should.
Lots of the protests, but it's, that's, that was just like Terry said, that's why.
Things like, we, we resold them, we, um, not supported the grant. The only one that I can recall, one is that they didn't actually meet the criteria. So we had a, a private organisation. So we said no. The second one was, was, uh, one of the church groups wanted to support a Christmas box appeal in, which would benefit uh, people in, in developing countries. The only other time we put provisos on is when they haven't provided certain information. So for example, they haven't provided the financial statement or they haven't provided a constitution. And the briefing that the decision has always been subject to the officers obtaining that information. So that's not really changing the nature of the grant. That's actually just saying, in order, you haven't quite complied with the, the conditions. We're happy with what you want to use, but you'd still need to provide certain information. And then to find this comment on one that Chris, as the mayor raised, it really was 80% of the pupils of that school actually were based in Thetford. So, so that, that changed the, the committee's decision when they considered that's not right.
So coming back to the point, what is considered for the benefit of the people of Thetford is 60, 75, 80 or 90. On previous occasions, they decided 80 was sufficient. So maybe this is something where we need to pin down from the next, from next applications coming through. To make it easier for us.
Okay. Um, I think we're just going to have to vote on whether we support the grant or not at this. Pulled it all apart so much. Um, okay. And some things we have done with previous grants is we get the big cheque out. The councillor goes and gets a photo with big cheque, which Terry's always thought I was joking about the big cheque, but it's real. Okay. Um. Should I just?
If we do a vote on either.
Okay, okay. So the vote will either be, so which is the primary? To not support?
To not support the grant at this time and gain further information from the applicant. Or your other recommendation could be to support the grant.
So do we do two votes to see which gets more?
Um, being as we've got a caveat with the first one, can we have a caveat with the support in that it is in some way branded with the town council logo?
Yes.
So if, if we add that on the approval, I would, I would go with that.
Okay. So first we'll do the vote. So those of you who wish to not support the grant and ask the officers to go back and collect more information, please vote in favour. Okay. And a vote for those to support the grant, but we ask them to include Thetford Town Council branding on their materials. All those voting in favour. So I need a proposer in a second.
Yeah, you get a proposer in a second on that one.
Okay, okay. Can we have a proposer, Mac? And second, a Stuart? And then everyone voting in favour. Okay. That was supposed to be the easy. I hadn't read this as a recommendation beforehand. I missed that. Okay. Let's move on. So number four, five, seven, 24, the Open Reach Way Leave application. And on this one, I believe Alan is going to provide us with some additional information. It was lacking.
Okay, this sort of, we've had three different applications, three different postcodes with the same map. It's taken us quite a long time to actually work out where they, what, what, what are they actually applying for? Eventually they sent through this application. So this is the third way leave application. And again, it's not very detailed. Uh, so when we looked at it, if you look at the agreement, for example, uh, uh, if there's damage to the cabling and if it's an allotment site, there's always a risk that someone's been digged up. Uh, they might private an allotment holder of the roots of their land. We had all those questions. This morning, someone from Open Beach, the actual engineer designer, Ash came to see us. And he brought in, I called Nick down because I'm just a simple accountant, can't understand maps and things like that. I called Nick down. We had a good look at it. Basically what they're doing is they're putting, uh, they used to have copper lines to the cottages, uh, uh, down Station Road. Uh, those poles are being removed. So they want to keep a telephone system with fibre optic in, at, at the time. They're going to put a telephone change box just outside the, the gate, which is not our land. So they're free to do that. They've asked us to run a cable along the bounty fence. It's just inside the allotment. So when the allotments are, there's a track and then there's, there's, there's a bounty. They're going to run it down from 40 to 60 metres. And then they're going to place a pole. They had the option of placing it in Rose Cottage, which is the property right next door to the, to the allotment site or our allotment site. Uh, and they've asked if they could place it there. And that's really what, uh, what it's about. The reason to us is as a result of what they've explained to us, everything that I put in that paper kind of goes away because they've now clarified it. Uh, and that's really what it is. So it's just running a bounty line. They're aware that we have a water tap connection on that, on that bounty line. And they will take that into account when they're placing the fibre optic.
Mac?
I've got one question, being as we've had quite a long discussion before, and how on earth are we going to spend the 254 pounds? We're going to spend it on?
I think we should get a little podium for the judo.
And Mike, so did they assure us that none of the allotments would be?
They, they've actually painted, they've painted on the ground, uh, where they're actually going to put it all. And they've given, shown us photographs of that. It is against the hedge and if an allotment holder actually goes anywhere near that hedge, they are in breach of the allotment rules. They'll be digging across a, the path that the allotment holders would use to drive into the allotment site and park by the allotment into the allotments.
So will it be, will it impact the roots of the hedge?
No.
Okay. Um, sorry, isn't the secret hands first? Terry?
Um, I'm going to be that guy again. Um, it says it may be necessary for the council to seek legal advice. Um, shall we defer this until you have? Because there is a substantial risk here.
We, they've, sorry, sorry. They've mitigated all the risks that we had. So it wouldn't be a risk of competition. It's not a risk of reputation damage.
Since they've come in today, um, prior to them coming in today, I absolutely have told you to go down and seek legal advice. But since I'm coming in today and updating Nick and Alan, I would definitely say this is not something that you would want to spend your money on legal advice for.
So it's literally a foot within the fence line boundary. So they're basically running alongside our existing fences on the site at the moment. The officer attended today did give reassurance that, you know, everything is under their restrictions. So if they do damage the water pipe, they're to replace it and to reinstate.
Blow the town.
No, if they, if they sort of damage the water pipe and that. Um, but yeah, they will reinstate everything back as was, um, to its original condition. Once the pipe has laid and the cable's laying.
Chris?
Can we write a letter to each individual allotment holder above the roof and tell them this is what the telecommunications, not, not the beginning, they're losing their allotments for things like that.
I think that's very true.
Do we want to write individual letters or put signs up?
Through social media.
Social media and an email are the problems.
Do we have everyone's email addresses?
I think we have 96% because we already said that, uh, 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 renewals, there might be one or two people that we still.
Could we do an email and a sign on the entrance gateway?
Just could. We'll have to, they have to find out at the time.
Yeah.
We have reassurance from Open Reach to say they won't just do half a job like they did on the Admiral's Estate. They've done half the estate as opposed to the rest of it.
What's the view? Just do.
They got most of, half of Admiral's Estate laid fibre optic and left the other half. So it's half, well, half hasn't. Absolute mess, isn't it?
Yeah, we can't, they're only laying the pipe through our land. We can't specify who they're giving it to. That might be.
There's only effects, I think, four properties.
Yeah.
It's just an agreement to either agree to the way leave or not to agree to the way leave. But you put it up with your council.
It can, but if that's good, that's to get a medium to full council.
I think one of the great things we could do if we're committing a happy is to put stipulation in that once the work is complete, an officer will attend site to make sure they're happy with the condition left. Yeah. If they're happy with that.
And now we do have this additional information. Do we still need to refer to full council?
Uh, just as formality, if this committee votes, it would be like any other committee recommendation to full council.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Protocol is that we, that full council does not override the decisions of committees. The mayor is here. Head of it, it's going to change by the call. I'm talking to the sergeant.
Okay. Waiting for my wording. Okay, so we're going to vote to support the application of the way leave and pass a full council for ratification. Can we have a proposer? Stuart? Seconda? Carla? All those in favour?
And the lot holders will get that is all mentioned.
Yeah, actually, a little bit extra point for lots.
Communication flowing in for them. Offered the emails to all, um, perfect.
Okay, I thought that was a bit different. So I'm glad you've got all that extra information. Okay, so four, five, eight, 24, water harvesting. So we've had, I think, a quite exciting proposal for some water harvesting to be installed or potentially looked at being installed, um, in various locations in town. Does anyone have any comments or questions, Mac?
I think it's really good. It's, it's going to, and it will support both the environmental stuff and the Anglo and Bloom. Because we're doing so well on all that front. So carry on with the great work. I'm just really surprised at the cost. You know, 15 to 20 to get 900 quid back a year. I know it'll be over many years. Um, but it seems an awful lot of money for what is basically water bays. That's what they are.
I think some of that cost is, um, is that just the installation of the water?
It's the providing the installation, uh, plus the pumps and, and the installation of the electrics and stuff, all the pumps. So, yeah. But, um, long term, obviously that'll go towards, like you say, environmentally, being seen to be harvesting our water rather than taking it from the mains.
And also, um, in the future, what we're looking to do is supply all of our places that have got toilets with this water.
Yeah.
Implementing that. So that we'll be using no water source. We'll be using all collected rainwater for all of our toilets.
Yeah. So it's always, yeah, the option later on, if the councillors and committee are happy, like Sonia, my town clerk says that, you know, there's options out there. Some towns and cities are now actually providing their public conveniences with rainwater harvested from tanks, uh, for the flushing of the toilets and things. Um, and they're also doing it to their public buildings. So there's an option there to really go, you know, environmentally friendly as we go on down the line.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, I agree with Mac. Um, it does seem a lot of money. And the point of it, I mean, it is a good thing in and of itself, but the point of it really is largely is something that goes gold with Anglo and Bloom. That's one of the things they are asked for.
Yeah.
But I suggest that rather than doing all five sites, we trim that down to maybe one or two.
Um, yeah, I think, I'll agree with Mac and Terry. I think this is quite a big cost for that. Looking at maybe two of the sites as opposed to all four.
It is enough to be for all the, to implement all the buildings. Um, I've been in agreement to split maybe half in one year and spread it over to also maybe two, three years, make it easier. Uh, although I can see the benefit from the environment point of view, they use the manifesto, they want to grow as green. And yes, they're responsible for this council for the remainder of this, this mandate. And this is right down in your guys' alley. That's what you propose yourself. So this goes perfectly. So I can see obviously be one of your priorities to make it as environmentally friendly as possible.
I just, I just think.
It's definitely the cost, you know, make it easier.
Think going forward, it shows your commitment to the green agenda and also, um, uh, it leads the, as a council, we're leading the way then, um, as one of the first councils to do it at town level. I mean, district and county councils have did it, done it, but it's not many at town level that have done it. So it's really good that you've acted.
It's the weather, they allow them late and just get, get those, those super suckers and the plates for the benefits going forward, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I really strongly support this. I'm really pleased to see it. Um, I guess this costing is one costing that we've received so far from, and we'll get some others. Um, I just wondered about the, so I really support it. I don't really mind whether we do it all at once or do sites sequentially. I wouldn't want us to do one and then kind of get too worried about the financial impacts or whatever. Because, you know, I, I think there are other reasons for doing it. It's not just based on that. Uh, we, we talk about commissioning reports though for £4,000 on potential savings.
Yeah, so, um, Nick, Nick went to another company to get some more costs.
Yeah.
And what they're suggested is that if we pay for this report of a thousand pounds, they'll be able to give us the true cost benefit analysis of each site.
Do I look at each individual site, uh, the capacity of water that can be potentially harvested from the space of the, the roof? So they measure the roof space and can calculate, uh, within reason, how much water levels that reach onto the top of the brim of the roof. Um, and how much you can obviously receive into a tank. They'll also do the breakdown of costing through the water, uh, how much. They'll also do the breakdown of costing through the water, uh, how much savings you can make. So it's a real detailed report and then we do an extensive amount of work behind the scenes, uh, with a full presentation afterwards to be presented. Um, to move the project forward. Um, but it is the initial cost just to have that survey, um, and report carried out.
Okay, I mean, I think, so am I right in thinking that this funding would come from the budget, the climate change budget that's caused so much controversy in town? And so it's particularly important we're able to justify that spend in terms of the financial savings we'll make as well as the climate resilience and things.
It is, it will be in the reserves, yes, so that fund would be, is sitting in reserves, it's not coming out of the budget.
So you feel in support of us doing the report to get as much information as possible?
Yeah, that's right. I guess the only other slight reservation I had was whether the, whether we factored in service costs and repair costs and things for the pumps and whatever else they need.
Yeah, overtime.
I don't know how often these things go wrong.
No. Would you like us to go back, get the report and then come back again in March with this? Or how would you like us to go for?
I, I thought that would be good, if I could just.
Yeah, if I, if I could answer that, I think rather than go full bore on this before we know what sort of benefits we're going to get, I think a bit of investigation would be good. And we also, a bit love that's a, that's a chair of corporate services to spend half their budget on, on one issue. It'd be nice to spread it around a bit in terms of the green stuff. So, um, yeah, let's get, let's get a report, let's have a look at it and maybe not go full bore on that.
I think your report will also give you the, um, offset for the public toilets as well, so that'll kind of give you a breakdown for future budgeting. So that'll give you an idea of going forward of how much it will cost to install on those sites and give you the options available for those. Um, so I think, you know, the, the report is probably the detailed, you know, version if the committee are happy.
Yeah, I think that's a very good idea and I was just going to say that would help guide us if we don't want to do all four at once, that would actually tell us which ones are going to save us most money earlier.
Absolutely, and again, you know, when we have the consultation and the survey carried out, we can liaise with the, um, attendant on the day, you know, to say that, you know, we're looking to do this in stages, you know, we haven't got an invoice of money, so we are looking to break this down. So what would be the advisory on that, you know, the best solution to harvest the amount of water?
And if you're talking about just doing two, uh, this year, then we can find out the best two, which will give us the best save.
Absolutely.
Um, but that would be the best thing to do, it would be, it would be a good spend of that money to find out the true cost effectiveness of this scheme.
Oh, Mac?
Yeah, on that note, bearing in mind that one of the buildings is the Carnegie, um, and the other one is the Gildor, which is currently covered in scaffolding. You know, does it make sense or does it help or does it hinder?
The scaffolding will come down next month, so. That won't be it.
Yeah, if it takes putting more scaffolding up.
I never been greatly in favour of spending money on sufficient space, but I, I can see sometimes we need the technical expertise for some things and money is valuable money. Uh, and for a thousand grand, I'd definitely expect them to tell us, write out, make some forecasts, spend the full financial provisions of not only what the maintenance of each section will cost over time. What's the annual inflation, how much is going to increase in cost for maintenance or how much is it going to save us even with, with the market flow? So if, if anything, they should give, give us a full project forecast for, I'd say, ten to ten years, five to ten years movement. Otherwise, we're just wasting a thousand quid to do simple math so we can, you know, do a calculator for ourselves.
Nineteen, nineteen years, it's like, but nineteen, if it's nine hundred and ninety-five pound a year.
That is a long time to recoup the money, I'm not even asked for nineteen years, but certainly a ten year forecast of benefit versus costs. To justify the argument.
I don't think it's a report that costs nine nine five, not the actual saving.
I was, I was getting worried that. Over time, recoup the costs of fifteen years.
Savings on the tires will cost nine nine five, not the savings.
On potential savings.
That's what I read.
Report on potential savings.
The savings on water in the tank is a normal nineteen years.
But we need those numbers even to justify to the, to the ground, so how the management best just change.
Yes, okay, great. So from that, it sounds like we want to go with officers' recommendation number four at this point in time. So we're going to vote on council to agree to spending nine hundred and ninety-five pounds on a report to look at this project.
And to bring the funds back to March meeting, March meeting, yeah.
Yeah, will it be ready?
We need a bit more writing.
Be ready by March.
Try my best. The pressure's on.
It's a future meeting.
Back to a future meeting.
Otherwise, we're going to have a very packed trial event.
Right, please, your corporate service.
Well. Okay, so can we have a proposer? Yayan and a seconda? Who hasn't? You see, there's a table to the terrace one, so I was trying to think who's there. And vote for all those in favour? Excellent, unanimous vote. Lovely. Okay, so on to the next, four, five, nine, twenty-four, pocket park on area outside the Carnegie. So another project and nice to see that we have funding for this one. Well, hopefully if we get it done. Terry?
Um, so I'm going to pick myself up. It was me who suggested when we had reports of it all being, uh, all the papers being round chapel that said couldn't we make a pocket park out of it? So I'm delighted, absolutely delighted, uh, that this is coming into being or potentially coming into being. And for two thousand pounds, I think it's a steal.
Make council aware that there are some caveats to this eight thousand pounds that district have got to give us. Um, one of them is that it's done by the end of this month. So that tight deadline, because they took so long to come back to us, that deadline, very tight deadline is, might be unachievable. We're trying our best, poor Nick.
Certainly try my best, so this Friday I've got a meeting with, um, a contractor that's going to help us try and, uh, make a design up for the pocket park initially. Um, so originally the, the whole surfacing was being looked at to be replaced, that was non viable. Uh, the cost was actually astronomical to replace the surface and back into the area. So using some of the good slabs around the area and potentially using more around the base of the tree, we're going to create a pocket park. The tree will be pruned slightly to adjust, um, to allow light into the area for, uh, plants to survive. And one of the things that the, um, contractor was sort of proposing was a sensory garden, um, something that sort of focuses on, um, a number of aspects, sensory aspects. Um, and inclusion, inclusivity, um, to our members of the community. Um, so yeah, we're certainly going to try to get this, um, in motion. Um, a lot of the groundwork we hope to get done by the end of the month. And it may be just a work in progress, add planting and bits as the time becomes suitable and the months go on with March and April. Um, but if we can get the, certainly the groundwork and the actual, um, design part done, ready, um, we hope to deliver this and get the funding, fingers crossed.
So can we confirm with them, um, that they are happy with where we will realistically be at the end of January?
Yeah.
I have, um, I have a telephone conversation booked for tomorrow with them. Um, the problem we have at the moment is they want free contractor quotes. We will not get free contractor quotes by the end of the month, that's unachievable. Um, because free people will not want to quote for that in that short time because of the size of the project. Um, and the other thing is, is getting the groundwork done in time. Um, it's such a tight deadline, but I just want to make you aware, we are trying our best.
Yes.
Because we do want to see this area changed because it's right for being a pocket park.
Is, is there any leeway on the date, do you feel?
No.
Given this, well, it feels then that stipulations have been designed to fail, doesn't it?
It's, um. It's the, it's the R E P F fund, it's central government that are giving it to districts, so it's, it's all on, um, that. So district have told me a hundred percent that that is the date.
Okay.
They can't move the date.
I think if we can get the initial design, the groundwork, um, and the, the main bulk of it installed. Um, there's really room to potentially take this forward over time, um, with the town team and the volunteers. So we can really move this, you know, as an additional part, but the first part, use the, obviously the funding to install this pocket park to get the groundwork into place. Um, and then we can go on from that point.
Um, Carla? I was just going to clarify whether or not it's possible, uh, you answered partially the question, um, to whether or not the team in house with the council could do that. Some way they, they're going to take on more responsibility to do their own repairs, like benches and whatnot, rather than contracting the work because it's hard for them, you know, get three quotes in such a short amount of time. Um, and then delegate to our own in-house team, the cost would go to us, the contract would give it to the, to the workers, even if it's for headed out or whatever. Maybe swiftly way and way that the works can be done, providing that we need that, that line, if it's written in.
I don't know if our stuff, I don't know if our guys have the skill to put.
I think, I think we've been getting this groundwork side in.
Yeah.
Um, and the actual physical, um, design set up. I think with the volunteers and the team, we can really develop that garden, you know, for the planting. I mean, they've done a fantastic job in the town centre and the open spaces. We've really transformed some areas, but it's the actual initial installation and the groundwork that we need to, to focus on with the help of the contractor. But certainly I think, you know, as an angle, um, for Sonia, our town clerk, to sort of discuss with the, the funders and say, you know, if we was to use a contractor for the initial groundwork side. But to be cost effective and, and to use the money wisely, we use our in-house council team, um, to deliver this, then hopefully, you know, they will come on board and understand the situation we're in with the time limits.
Can I make a suggestion? I think my, you might not be helpful when you go back to the funders, because you are one of turning to sensory park. Bring along the organisations to work with, uh, that would benefit from that sensory element and use them as a consultee.
Yeah, we don't have the time. We do not have the time.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, if it was a year in the making, I would absolutely agree with you, but we have three weeks, literally three weeks.
Three weeks. I mean, it's just, I, I understand, it is very short, I was suggesting that because I work for.
Yes.
I, in my previous life, I worked with this, in this area, so that's, I know that they could very carefully provide the consultation, the guidelines and the settings. The team build it, you know, designers. Because it's a benefit some.
Nick says, once it's in, what we can then do is add to that and then we can use.
Yeah.
The people that you're saying to say, can you come in and see what we're missing and what we can add?
Even if you put it down to the funders, that you are going to use that as a partnership to, for the benefit of those groups, it puts a whole lot more value. On the, on the social side of what the park is going to provide.
I've got to be honest with you.
Just a way of arguing.
If we even achieve this, I will be a standard.
Okay, fair point.
So the question is, you know, should we go first? The question is, are we?
Can we?
Yeah, basically.
Yeah, fair point.
That's what it's got to come down to, I think, um, we are trying our absolute.
Absolutely.
I was going to say that, um, I have visions of one of those DIY SOS type things. We break up, we break up the slabs or pull it aside and have a kind of community blitz on it.
Yeah.
That we may not have time to organise that kind of thing.
Get down there tomorrow morning with a shop.
I would, I would volunteer my time to come and help with it for sure.
Stuart's next.
Um, yeah, I think what Nick said about including the sensory garden in the pocket park, obviously ties in with everyone who likes a place, that's.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It fits many different aspects.
And that's why we got the fund, because it does tie in with, you know, all of the, um, um, agendas of district and central government. So that's why we got the fund for this.
Uh, Terry?
There's still some diversity here, isn't there? We, we, we go for it and hope to get it in going time. Or we don't and we do a longer term plan, which is, will be much the same and, you know, because work has to be done there. There, there's, there's no doubt that work, it has to be done there. So I think one way or another, it's going to cost us if we give it a go as a chance of saving ourselves eight grand if we don't reason. Um, and well, there you are, that's, that's the financial decision now because it will cost us one way or another.
The financial decision is if it doesn't cost you, if you don't pay the ten thousand pounds for the pocket park, say we don't get the funding, we don't hit the criteria in the top. Um, the alternative is that we either keep the barriers up because it's a health hazard, it's health and safety. Or we pay thirty thousand pounds, I think the costs are coming in at, to, um, put some more concrete down there, which none of us want to see.
Yeah, exactly.
It's, it's a midway option because, um, as you say, something's got to be done with it. Um, and Yayan's idea that we, we do something to begin with.
Yeah.
If we just get on with it and, and clear the ground and if we don't get the eight grand, we just grass it. Everything else can come later.
Yeah, I agree, we can do that.
Do that with two.
What I want, yeah, what I want to try and do first is get this project completed within the ten grand and we get the eight thousand pounds. But if we don't do that, then that is definitely a second option is that we just go out there, get the contractor to cut the slabs, because that's the big thing. It's cutting the slabs into a circle or whatever shape we're going to use because we don't have the equipment. Um, and then to grass it at the bare minimum.
As a fourth explain better than nothing. I think we're going to try and go for it. See how we get on. Tomorrow would be enlightening as well.
I will, I will, I'm doing my clerk report at the end of the week, so I will update you all on my conversations. Um, and there we are.
Okay. Great, okay, so, um, I can vote on these, we can vote on these together, right? So if we're all happy then to do our votes, no more comments. Um, so I'm going to put these together, so we're going to approve the fund, or we're going to vote to approve the funding allocation of two thousand pounds from reserves for the project. And authorise the community and environmental services manager to proceed with the design and implementation of the pocket park. Could I have a proposer please? Uh, Mac and a seconda, Terry, all those in favour?
Perfect, relive. Your face. Really cream it up.
Okay, so next we are on to four, six, zero, twenty-four, food, no, sorry. I'm hungry. I'll go for that. Alleviation sites in Stepford. So we have a report here, um, and a recommendation on whether we're going to agree to the suggested proposals at Rich, Richard Eastern Play Area. Do we have any comments or questions on this? Eric?
Um, this feels like a remarkably brief and unsync synced, um, sort of explanation of the issues here. I would like a lot more information about this, about other places they've looked, um, the likely impacts of this, how dangerous it's likely to be for children. There's so much stuff missing for this, I think we can only defer.
I think, um. Speaking to the officers at county, I think, um, what they want to know is whether you'd be in agreement to, for them to come in and speak to you guys and present it to you. I think this site is a bit controversial myself considering it's a play park. Um, but they haven't highlighted the other areas that we own. This is the only area that we own that they're highlighted.
It's a bit like a factory complete, isn't it?
Stuart?
Well, I'm, I'm sounding really dopey here. Can I ask what flood alleviation, um, is?
Pond.
It's, it's sort of a.
So whether, right, or you were sort of flood water would go.
Yeah.
Because what, what, the strange thing is, well, not strange, it's noted Fairfield's, yet Fairfield's is the highest point in Stepford. Yeah, so surely the flood, why would the highest point of that be flood? We should be looking at the lowest points of that, because.
I, I think, is it because of, I mean, I'm just guessing, but because of the, um, I mean, the thing is, we have lack of infrastructure throughout the sewer network, so I'm not clear on why it's this site.
I, I don't, I am not a technical person, I couldn't tell you why they picked this site. Um, they just said that they looked at it and this is the only site that we own that they would, they were putting proposals for.
Yayan, I've got next, sorry.
Yeah, uh, a declaration of, of interest, I guess, I live pretty much on this site, so.
Um, and I know how controversial putting anything on that breeds big, angry with the residents.
I wasn't sure whether they were talking about having an open pond or not, if it's. If it's an open pond.
It is.
There are big.
I think that's one.
And my understanding was, I guess, I, I was puzzled why, I'm not aware of, um, flood issues in Fairfields. I think that they do sometimes have issues of drain, but not, I, I couldn't quite see how this would help alleviate those things. I guess any runoff might help when they're looking for ways to do that. So, um, yes, I kind of felt like we probably need a bit more information. Are we being asked, what is, what is?
They just want, um, you to make a decision on whether you would be, um, acceptable to carry on with conversations or if it's outright no.
And, and are we, are we in a position?
No, yes, you are. It's your, you own the property.
Okay.
Uh, Carla next.
I, I, I sympathise with the, with the comments on both sides of the table, particularly Terry, it is, it's got a point. I mean, it's a play area, I mean, there's a lot of safety issues involved when you put deep areas of water together with small children. And to me, that's a bit of a non-go area. Also the elevation point that yourself, you, you mentioned, um, I would to know, you know, Sonny said, we're not technicians and neither am I, so how would we understand why is it absolutely necessary that isn't that area, not, not another area, that's for that to lower than it's it.
So if you wanted to open up negotiations with them, then they would explain that to you because they are the technical experts. In that case, I didn't understand it at all, to be fair.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a lot of technical jargon and a lot of details that we're not clear about that seem to be a bit muddled. I would prefer to have a very specific, um, explanation or presentation about all of those points, how they're going to address them, how they're going to justify the necessity versus the risks and the dangers for us to have any clear view of how to.
Yeah. Also, what I need to be minded is, this isn't the only site they're looking at in Stepford, there are quite a few in Stepford. It's the only one that we own, that they're looking at.
Um, yeah, we, we, we need, we need to justify it. It's part of a system throughout the town, which I have a bigger picture, no, I, I, I get it, but elevation, play park, the whole thing just seems to be scum related and not making sense to me.
Eric?
Um, I will state, I want to state the opposition to this in its current form. Um, however, the reason it's on a high point elevation is because water saved elevation, um, can stubble when you get down to lower. That's why you, you, you stop rivers flooding by planting trees in the Highlands, it's the same thing. And that, that's the reason they will put it there.
Now, that's just very useful, because I know nothing about water elevation.
The other slight thing that concerns me is when, in a recent walk around Kingsley, and they've got a flood thing on the, in, sort of on the edge of their estate, and that is a disaster likely to happen. You know, they've put a fence about that high and it's a great big deal. And how long before someone inadvertently goes over the top of it? But it's so dangerous, some people.
They have had a balancing pond at the entrance to the nunnery estates for the last thirty years, which is the same with just a small fence and I don't think anyone's.
Pretty much every estate, new build estate, has a pond similar now.
Yeah.
I don't read many drownings.
They have, um, they did say at the last meeting that the ones they're going to build on the new park are going to be, uh, of a different build, so they're going to be shallower. Um, because the ones that they've built are to an old spec, so they are deeper. But again, there hasn't been any issue.
Um, I had Mac on my list next, did you put her name?
No, I think we talked it to death.
Any other comments that we go to a vote?
I would just say, I guess on the grounds of, um, potential benefit to biodiversity and, um, rainwater conservation and that kind of stuff, I'm, I'm interested enough to, to have discussion. So although I can see lots of reasons to object, but I'm, I'm interested to find out more about it.
Hmm.
Okay, um, lost my sheet, so. So we want to vote, um, what do we want to vote?
You want to change it, don't you?
Yeah.
Whereas then we'd really. So what do you, so do you want your proposal to be, um, for the town clerk to go back to flood alleviation officers and set up a meeting with councillors?
Not sure, I think we need a proper report.
Uh, uh, need that, uh, presentation.
Including other areas suggested.
I think that would come from them in a meeting. That wouldn't be for me to write because I would not be able to give this technical.
No, that's, that's, that's fair.
So I mean, for them to produce a report and give us a presentation on it to come back to us with their presentation.
I think a report would be better than a presentation, personally.
I, I think, I, I think they're, they're willing to come and do a presentation.
Yeah, better.
But that would probably be on the teams.
Oh, yeah.
Going a day, Monday to Friday.
I think the team's rather too.
So we've had that with our, um, conservation contracts, where they put together the report and then we meet them either in person or on teams to talk through and have an opportunity to ask questions. Um, so, okay, so we are going to vote on the town clerk going back to the flood alleviation officer, um, and request a report and presentation for the committee.
Yeah.
Yeah. Proposer? Stuart. Seconder? Carla? All those in favour? Okay, so next on the agenda is four, six, one, twenty four, progress on actions from previous meetings. Were there any action points we wanted to specifically? Lost my action. No worries.
Um, if I can comment and say, what I just should do is, was actually the wrong, the wrong document.
There's no reason this document, yes.
Uh, the one, the one that's, uh, the one that's now because of the website that I will send it to all, all committee members, uh, tomorrow morning. This is more up to date. We had a meeting with the chair in December and we just noticed that, that some of, for example, the completed, uh, action plans were incomplete. I think it's, we've originally had two or four, and I can assure you that Nick and these people have done more than two or four things since, since May and the outstanding ones are there. So I have updated it, I prepared a document, the actual comments of the, whether it's complete or not, it's quite, it's a lot more comprehensive than, than what you received. I understand, I can expect you to comment on it, but at least if I distribute it to the vast meeting, everything should be up in order and it should be an accurate reflection of what the committee have done. But the committee, we have done a lot and previously that didn't reflect in the action plan and that's without this. The other thing that, there was one key action that has always been excluded and the chair brought that to our attention, goes back to the June meeting and that was that letter regarding the support of the nature and forgotten.
Climate and nature though.
Uh, both, and that's, uh, I put back in the action list, we haven't done that.
Okay, thank you very much, Alan, for working on that. Um, any comments bearing in mind we haven't seen it? Okay, great. We'll, we'll reach that at leisure once we send that through. Uh, okay, four, six, three, twenty four, committee officers update, any updates?
Yeah, so it's just a couple from the south. Um, just to update the committee that, um, the previous weekend, it's just gone, um, we had an incident happen on the Barnham Cross Common. Um, I was called by a member of the public to report through that we had quad bikes chasing our flock of sheep that was currently grazing on the common itself. Um, so I made immediate contact with the police, um, and today I had a visit from police officers from the, say, the labour team, and they dedicated an officer to help, um, alleviate some of the issues we're having on the common with motorbikes and quad bikes. Uh, one of my team members went down and, and realised that the fence had also been cut on the riverside of the common. So it seems like they have been sort of bordering around the Nunnery Drive area of the Barnham Common itself. Uh, so the police have reassured us that they're going to deploy drones and quad bikes themselves and they're going to try and alleviate, you know, catching these individuals that are creating the issues we're having, um, and to support our grazer as much as possible. Um, the other update I have for you, um, is a good news update. So a case was raised, uh, back in November last year. And again, I had a police officer, um, update me today that somebody had pleaded guilty, um, to criminal offences of graffiti around the town centre. Um, so prosecution is currently happening to that member of, um, of the public that[1739.03]